I didn't remember that, Zones. They had all the Elvis songs where he got the inspiration or people wrote them. It was amazing.
All the Tonstall students, I'm gonna ask you all to come around this podium, please, so for your assignment, come up here before we get started. I'm gonna let you all lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Come on, let's give them a big hand while they're here tonight. We love it when our young people come to council meeting.
We love to embarrass them.
Not saying that the persons here from NAACP aren't young, they're young, young too. So what I want you to do is gather around that podium and then we'll ask you all to lead us into the pledge of allegiance. All your teachers will see that you're here for your assignment and afterwards, when council is over, we'll assign your paperwork so your teachers will know, and we welcome you all here.
Not yet.
And they're ready to go.
You don't have to worry about it. If y'all want, I think y'all ready to practice. Call the meeting, or the Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Buckner?
Here.
Reverend Campbell?
Here.
Mr. Hood?
Here.
Mayor Jones?
Here.
Mr. Mayo?
Here.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Here.
Mr. Saunders?
Here.
Mr. Vogler?
Here.
Mr. Whittle?
Here.
If you're tuning in, you'll see these young people here from Tonstall High School. Councilman Sherman Saunders is going to lead us in the invocation, followed by our pledge of allegiance that's gonna be led to us by Tonstall High School. If everybody will please stand up, and we welcome you all here. Councilman Saunders.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. God, tonight we come again to say thank you. We ask for your continuous blessings and guidance. God, our world needs you even more today than some may realize. Anger, which turns to violence, respect for each other seem to be declining, dislike and hate for many of us seem to be growing, respect for human life seem to be declining as well. We believe it is imperative that our children grow up in a world full of love, kindness, understanding, and no differences are settled through any form of violence. Yes, God, we know that children are watching. We want them to see you and your love in us. The children are our future adult leaders. Education in this city is this city's council number one priority for the approximately five students in our city schools. Yes, God, we want our school system to be among the absolute best in the state of Virginia. God, we also pray for our school teachers and everyone involved in our students' learning. God, our mayor, Melondo Jones, Vice Mayor, Dr. Gary Miller, and all city council members, city staff, and citizens with like minds, pray for unity and encourage others to join our circle of love and respect. We ask that our city, Danville, Virginia, become a beacon of light for the world to emulate. As we need peace, understanding, and respect among all of your children everywhere, please spread your love throughout all of your universe. Please continue to bless our staff, to include law enforcement, public safety personnel, all city employees, and citizens. God, we ask all these blessings in your name and for your sake.
Amen? We'd be led in pledge of allegiance by our young people from Tonstall High School.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all so much. Again, to those of you who are here in the chambers, we want to say good evening to you all. Those of you who are viewing by River City TV, Facebook, or in your homes, we want to say good evening to you all. What a warm and fervent and effectual prayer, Councilman Saunders. Talked about love, he talked about kindness. We actually did not know that the young people from Tonstall were going to be here, and he especially talked about and praying for our young people. Under communication, citizens who desire to speak on matters not listed on agenda will be heard at this time. Citizens who desire to speak on agenda items will be heard when the agenda item is concerned and considered. Those who'd like to speak on any item that's not on agenda may come forward at this time. Those who'd like to speak on any item that's not on the agenda may come forward at this time, please state your name and your address for the record, please. Good evening.
Good evening. I am Tommy Bennett, president of the Danville branch in NAACP, and I'd like my other officers and members to join me. We would like to say, this time a year ago, I lost one of my best friends and my vice president. And it was one of the hardest years I've ever gone through. Not only was she my vice president, but she was a good friend and a person I could talk to on a daily basis. And I'm so happy to announce, not only did she take the position as vice president, but she also got Norma's job. And we are so happy to have her and I have all my members and officers here who that are helping me throughout. One of our major sponsors that helps us through the city, went back to school, you'd be surprised what this young lady do for us from Fisher and Watkins Funeral Home. They do a lot for the city of Danville, and I'd just like to give them their flowers while we can. Also, I would, you know, last year, we lost our oldest member, Mrs. Thorpe, was like 113, something like that, 114, 114. And she was a member of Trinity Baptist Church. Tonight, we have one of our, we have our next oldest member with us, which is Abbott Harris. We call him Uncle Gus, 98 years old. Will you join us, Uncle Gus? Uncle Gus, 98 years old. This young man has three kids that he put through college. One was a school teacher at Grove Park under Mayor Harris's wife, Dorothy Harris. He had one son that's a nurse that deceased, and his youngest son was the first to graduate in aviation from Hampton, from Avret University. So, he has been around, he worked hard, and I just want everybody to see, I don't know about you all, I'm joining Trinity, 'cause everybody there lived to be way over 150. I think that's your church, Brian. Come on up.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Thank you for inviting me here. Brother Tommy.
Tommy, move that microphone right in front of your employees.
Brother Tommy is a good friend.
Lift it up, Tom, Tommy. Lift it up. There you go.
Brother Tommy is a good friend of our family, and he comes to see us, and he really is a nice fellow, but I just wanna say that I'm glad to be here with you all tonight, and I hope that you all will remember me.
He lives directly in front of the Boys and Girls Club, and Dennis, usually on the tape around 6 o'clock, Mayor Jones. Uh huh. And with, his daughter's always cooking, and she's another, she lives on Broadneck Street, so she'll tell you quickly, that's not Al-Magro, but it is.
Well, Tommy, before you go, before anybody leaves, introduce your staff, because you've been doing a lot, you've been very busy. Those of you who don't know, our city staff knows this and council knows this, but I don't think it's really out in the community yet. Tommy has actually resigned from several boards. We thank you for your service, and one of the reasons that he's resigned, you can go ahead and give him a hand for what he's done on our boards. I've been getting lots of calls of concerns in regards to why has Tommy resigned. The reason that Tommy's resigned is because he wanted to restructure the NAACP Board of Directors. We want to introduce each one of them and what do they do, because soon there's gonna be an NAACP drive and some other things that Tommy wants to do to reignite NAACP. So take time, you mentioned Shasta.
Yes.
Someone said today, when we came into the chambers, I think it was the awesome Sandra Mayo, that she really liked our white shirts. But Shasta, raise your hand, that's the new normal. She's got the white shirts. We thank you for the white shirts. Well, Tommy, introduce your staff, and then I want to talk to Uncle Gus and his daughter about dinner.
Yes, I'm just a member. Okay, come on up, Sandra, y'all go it, one by one. Come on, Sandra, y'all come on. Introduce yourself and tell your position.
I'm Sandra Hairston. I've been a member of the NAACP for a few years now, and I just, second vice president.
Thank you.
Come on up. Come on, Ms. Mayo.
I'm Donnie O'Mayo, I'm the newest member to the board, I'm the treasurer.
Good evening, everybody, my name is Darius Johnson, and I am the NAACP Youth President.
Thank you.
You get Shasta?
Oh, Shasta.
I'm just Shasta. One of the vice presidents as well.
Well, thank you all so much, I'm excited, thank you all for covering.
And I'm just Jackie, I'm just a member.
Well, Jackie, I want to, Jackie, I want to talk to you in a second. Uncle Gus, I was able to call Uncle Gus on his birthday, and Mr. Harris, and we had a wonderful time talking on the telephone. I think Councilman Saunders went to visit him at the church along with Tommy. So we're so happy that you're here, I enjoy talking with you on the telephone and wish you many, many more years, but I just want to say that on your 98th birthday, I know your birthday has passed, I'm looking so forward to coming to your house at 6:00 PM and having dinner with you and your daughter. I'm real excited about it. Thank you so much. Let's give them another big hand, and Tommy, thank you for being here.
And if y'all see a Bergen and Lincoln riding around Danville, that's Uncle Gus, he's driving a Bergen and Lincoln.
Okay, thank you all so much. And Tommy, thank you for serving on our boards and commissions. We're still in communication, any citizen who desires to speak on matters not listed on the agenda, come forward at this time. All the Tonstall High School students, please stand up, let us applaud you one more time and welcome you again to the council. Thank you all so much. Under, come, come on to the microphone, mother, come on to the microphone. Tommy, help her to the microphone. I want the audience to hear you, they can't hear you way back there. There are people who are viewing on television and Facebook, and they're probably wondering, this is his wife, this is Uncle Gus's wife, Ms. Harris.
I would like to say that I am Uncle Gus's wife for 75 years. And I raised three children. It was hard, but I thank God for it. I made a woman out of one and two real gentlemen out of the other, very loving children. That little lady, they scare me every day, she's at my house every day. She do the cooking, she takes me out, she never go anywhere and leaves me. I thank God for her.
Amen.
I thank God for, I thank God for Uncle Gus. Uncle Gus, as Tommy called him, he has been a real man in my life. He has been a real daddy to my children. I thank you, Uncle Gus, for all you have done for my children.
Ms. Harris, Ms. Harris, Ms. Harris, I have been invited to your home, is it okay with you that I come for dinner? I got two yeses, I need one more.
Big hug.
Is it okay with you that I come to your house for dinner?
Anytime.
Thank you so much, thank you so much. And thank you all so much for being here, you made our evening, thank you so much.
Jackie, don't mind cooking, she love to cook.
Thank you so much, thank you. That is beautiful. Under consent agenda, I open the public hearing, anyone desire to speak on any item that's on a public consent agenda may come forward at this time. Anyone who desires to speak on any item on a consent agenda may come forward at this time. I close the public hearing, council, what's your pleasure? Councilman Buckner?
May I like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
It is second, second by Councilman Mayo, discussion of the motion. Madam Clerk, if we would call a roll, please.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, myself and the Appointments Committee comprised of Councilman Mayo and Councilman Campbell would like you to consider the following appointments to the boards and commissions. A resolution reappointing Tyrell Payne to the Community Improvement Board, Mr. Payne, would you stand up? Resolution reappointing Jackson Weller to the Commission on Architectural Review. A resolution reappointing Sonya Ingram to the Commission of Architectural Review. A resolution reappointing Robert Weir to the Commission of Architectural Review. And a resolution appointing Carl Omquist to the Commission of Architectural Review.
Is that second? Second by Councilman Campbell, discussion of the motion. Madam Clerk, if we would call a roll, please.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Michael, good evening to you, sir. We'll have a review of the general funds, financial funds. Good evening.
Good evening. In your packet this evening, I believe you have our preliminary results for fiscal 22. Again, I say preliminary, we are still going through some final year-end adjustments. We have until the end of August to capture any revenue that comes in late that belongs to the prior year. And of course, we also receive invoices from vendors for an extended period of time, and so we're still working through those. We still have some adjustments to make, and of course, the audit will commence once we finish closing the books for the year. But at this point in time, let me share with you where we are. Total revenues for last year, fiscal 22, were just under 117 million. That was almost 100% of our budget, we were at 99.7% of our budgeted revenues. Property taxes did very well, real estate was right at 100, just over 100%. Our delinquent real estate collections exceeded our expectations, as did our personal property tax collections. The big variance is local consumer-driven taxes, as I've been mentioning in prior months, sales, meals, lodging, and business licenses. All four of those exceeded our expectations. The local taxes were actually $3 million over budget this year. Sales tax was 736,000 over budget, meals a million two, lodging 580,000, and business licenses 516,000. Now, some of that obviously has to do with inflationary trends that we've experienced over the last several months, but a lot of that is economic growth as well. Three areas of revenues did fall short this year, but for good reason. One is charges for services, this is primarily our charges for detention services in the jail, adult detention, and juvenile detention. The census in these three facilities were much lower than usual, which is good, but that also resulted in lower costs, and so you'll see that our public safety costs are about a million dollars under budget as well, so that kind of offsets. Another area that offsets is our categorical aid from the state, this is primarily our reimbursement for social services. We had a reduced use of adoption subsidies and foster care budget this year, and so we had less revenue coming in to reimburse, because those expenditures did not happen. That was about a million three. The other item that we were short on is actually a market adjustment to our investments, and I wanted to explain that a little bit tonight. As you know, we have a fund balance, and so that represents cash that's available, like our savings account. Obviously, we invest that cash, we don't just let it sit. Most of the time, we invest in other municipal bonds or federal agency notes that are backed by Freddie Mac or those types of programs. At the beginning of this year, if you remember, interest rates were very low, they've actually increased tenfold since last year. The Fed Reserve rate was around .25%, a quarter of a percent a year ago. Today, it's at two and a half, so it's 10 times higher. So what happens is, we invest our fund balance in some short-term investments, usually for about 12 months if we're having increasing rates. So a year ago, we were happy to find investments that were paying 1% in interest, that was great, it was like gold. Today, those investments aren't worth that much, because today you can get the same investments that are paying 2, 2 and 1/2%. So at June 30, we have to mark our investments down to what they're worth on that day. So those investments are not worth what we paid for them at that point in time. However, we never sell our investments, we always hold them to maturity. So whatever we invested, we're gonna get back, you know, with the interest. So it's a timing difference. So June 30, our investments were not worth what we, you know, paid for them, but as they mature, we get all that money back. And so that will reverse itself at some point, probably in fiscal 23, as those maturities come in, we'll reinvest those funds in higher earning investments. So it's a timing difference, it's just unfortunate that we had this happen right now at the end of the fiscal year. As far as I know, this is the first time we've had interest rates rising like this in the last, certainly the last 10 years, and this quickly, probably in the last 25 years. So it's just an anomaly. But again, it's a temporary thing. But that mark to market was about $2 million as we marked those down, but again, that will come back. On the expenditure side, our departments spent about 93 to 95 for similar budgets, most of that savings was through vacancies, as you know, just like most employers, we're having a hard time finding people to fill our necessary positions. Also, as I mentioned, public safety expenses were down because of the census in the detention facilities. Social services, again, were down because of foster care and adoption services not being utilized. The only over significant overage we had in expenditures related to our group health insurance, as I've mentioned in previous years, that's somewhat cyclical. Some years will have a year where claims come in about like we expect, we'll have a year where claims come in much lower than we expected, this year they came in a bit higher, about 14%. That represented about a million dollars more out of an almost $9 million budget for group health insurance claims. So when we get to the bottom line, when I prepared the financial statements for tonight, we were adding 400,000 to our fund balance. Now, again, as we make our revenue accruals that will come in the rest of this month, also, I'm certain some invoices will come in that we'll need to process. My guess is where we'll end up will be somewhere between 0 and 200,000 to the good, so I'm expecting to be very close to flat on our fund balance, which, we started the year off with a balanced budget, no use of fund balance, so this is kind of where we expect it to be. But we did have excess revenues, local taxes, we did have the market adjustment for investments which kind of counteracted that, but like I said, I think that, we will see that money come back to us in the future, it's just gonna be next year or this year, rather. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, unless we have questions.
Any questions?
Yeah, I was just curious, if we're buying the, when we bought the bonds at the low interest rate, you had a pretty good idea that they're gonna keep on climbing?
Right, so we were only locking in for 12 months at a time, right.
Anything else, Madison, anyone else? Councilman Campbell?
How much in reserves?
Reserves, I believe we ended last year, maybe just under 34 million, so this year we'll probably end just right at 34, a little bit above 34.
About the same.
Yes.
Anyone else? Michael, thank you so much, thank you so much. Consideration of authorizing the execution of a permanent utility easement in Pennsylvania County, Councilman Buckner?
May I like to make a motion that we approve a resolution of the City of Danville, City Council of Danville, Virginia, approving and authorizing the execution of a permanent utility easement on parcel number 2308-72-383185 in Pennsylvania County, Virginia, for a price of $5,000 plus reasonable recording cost.
Second by Councilman Mayo, discussion of the motion? Councilman Whittle?
Yeah, um, I guess we spoke about it before, but you got it tied into the mega site here now? Jason, thank you.
Jason, good evening. His question was, is this tied into the mega site?
No, this is for Mount Cross Road, this is not a meter involved for the mega site.
Okay, so the, it's not the pumping station, then?
That's the next one.
That's the next one.
Okay, thank you.
You good, Madison, anyone else? Madam Clerk, if you would, call a roll, please.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Consideration of approving the purchase and acquisition of the Page Road Water Pumping Station from Pennsylvania County, Councilman Vogler?
Yes, Mayor, I move we adopt a resolution of the City Council of Danville, Virginia, approving the purchase and acquisition of the Page Road Water Pumping Station parcel number 1388-51-3619, owned by the Board of Supervisors of Pennsylvania County for a purchase price not to exceed $64,270 in recording cost.
Second by Councilman Whittle, discussion of the motion? Madam Clerk, if you would, call a roll, please.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Consideration of approving and authorizing the city manager into a purchase power agreement for 20 megawatts of solar energy, Vice Mayor?
Mayor and council, I'd like to propose a resolution to the City Council of Danville, Virginia, approving and authorizing the city manager to enter into a purchase power agreement for 20 megawatts of solar energy capacity and renewable energy credits from the 2022 American Municipal Power Solar Project for a purchase price not to exceed $50 per megawatt hour.
Second by Councilman Buckner, discussion of the motion? Dr. Miller?
Yeah, this comes through the Utility Commission, and we approve this. The renewable energy this will supply is about 5% of our needs, in addition, we are, I think it's already 7 to 8%, it's what we have right now, so this will increase our renewable energy footprint quite a bit, so we wholeheartedly recommend this to council.
Thank you. Councilman Whittle, do you have a question?
I just was gonna have Jason explain it, because some people had asked about it, and I'd like to hear.
Jason, if you come forward, please.
And thank you, Dr. Miller.
This is a large 150-megawatt solar project in Ohio, so this is through our American Municipal Power membership, so we're looking at taking a piece of that, 20 megawatts, so it's using the membership and economies of scale of the membership to purchase our needs. We don't have a use for the entire 150 megawatts, but we certainly have a need for 20 megawatts as we're bringing a new industry and growing, this will certainly suffice for our needs, our electric needs.
Councilman Campbell?
Yes, thank you so much. With the battery storage project that we're doing, and also with this in reference to solar, could you just talk more about the stability of our pricing of utilities and keeping things reasonable, please? The solar project will have to be built, so it's two to three years out. I have some other projects that are working on, but they're all very much in our best interest and our customers' best interest.
Would this keep our rates stable, lower, or talk more about that in reference to?
Both. We're looking at ways to lower rates, stabilize rates, anything we can do to improve the bottom line.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Thank you, Jason. Councilman Whittle.
The other night when we spoke about the thermostats, can you talk a little bit about that?
We're evaluating a project to incentivize the customer who have smart thermostats, whether it's a Nest thermostat or Eco B or Honeywell, to allow a third party to control the thermostat during peak times. So what they would do, they would precool a house and then turn the thermostat off, basically not use heating or cooling during that peak time, and then incentivize the customer for use of their thermostat. So we're evaluating the pros and cons of that.
So what I liked about it is that we try to let everybody know when we have peak power surges or we're going to be priced on our peak. And for me, we try to go in and do that, but sometimes we miss it. And I think that's a, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, we run diesel generators. We ramp up our hydro, our Pinnacle's hydro, to its full capacity to help keep our demand at its lowest potential so we can keep our costs low.
I know you're looking into that. That's a great idea. Would it cost us anything as a customer for that third party?
No, if you don't want to participate, if you sign up and you don't want to participate or can't participate, there's no penalty or anything.
Councilman Vogler.
Jason, thank you for explaining different things that you got going on and that you're looking at. One more while you're up there. We had, you had mentioned different rates, a different plan that I think is really interesting and folks might want to hear more about, you know, somebody who's a nurse, for example, and is gone, you know, all through the day to have a lower rate set during that time. And then, or, you know, so explain that to folks who are watching.
Thank you for mentioning that. Our new time-of-use rates came into effect July 1 of this year. So we have peak periods described, and this is on our website. Our peak times during the summer are from 12:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. So there's a higher rate for on-peak, but then there's a much lower rate for off-peak. So about 81% of the total hours of the year are off-peak. And that includes weekends, all hours during the weekend, and the major holidays. So we're getting customers to look at their habits and seeing if that could be something they could take advantage of. But that's another way to incentivize the customer to stay off of peaks and maybe wash those clothes later in the evening or on the weekends when power prices are not so high.
Jason, thank you. And for someone who's interested in that, what do they need to do?
They just need to call customer accounts and the rates advertised on our website. And we already have customers signing up today.
Thank you.
Councilman Whittle.
So I talked to somebody today that's getting a new, I think, Toyota. And you're offering a better rate if they hook them up at night? Is that correct?
That's correct. So if they charge after 9:00 p.m., that's considered off-peak, so it's a lower kilowatt-hour rate.
That ought to be easy enough to do, plug them up before you go to bed.
We're also offering a charger, at-home charger rebate, $200 at-home charger rebate. But it has to be, have scheduling capabilities to where you're not charging during peak times.
And that hooks just into your regular 200 amp, 200 amp service?
I think it's 200 amps, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Jason. Madam Clerk, call a roll, please.
Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
Vice Mia Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Mia Jones?
Aye. Consideration of authorizing the issuance of bonds of the City of Danville, Virginia. I opened a public hearing. Anyone desires to speak on this agenda item may come forward at this time. Anyone desire to speak on this agenda item may come forward at this time. I closed the public hearing. Councilman Buckner.
May I like to make a motion that we approve an ordinance authorizing the issuance of bonds for the city, of the City of Danville, Virginia in the maximum aggregate principal amount of $16 million to finance the acquisition, construction, and equipment of various capital projects. First reading.
Second, by Councilman Mayo, first reading. Consideration of an application to the Virginia Department of Housing Development for an industrial revitalization grant, Councilman Vogler.
Yes, Mayor, I move we adopt a resolution approving and authorizing the submission of a grant application by the Danville Office of Economic Development to the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development Industrial Revitalization Fund and for the city to fund the balance of the River District project to eliminate blight.
Second, by Councilman Buckner, discussion of the motion. Madam Clerk, if you would, call a roll, please.
Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
I got a question.
Go ahead.
So I just had a question on the first reading. Is this a first reading on F, Mayor?
Ken, look, Mr. Attorney, on item E, Madison's question is, was that a first reading? Say it again, Madison.
Well, I just wanted to, if it's a first reading, do we have, do we ask a question on it? And F doesn't have first reading under it?
F is not a first reading. E is a first reading.
Okay, and so when we have E as a first reading, we don't discuss that?
You can if you want to. When I ask, when I call first, you can discuss it if you want to.
Okay, I just had a question.
Okay, on the E, we go back to E, and then Madam Clerk will come back. Is that okay, Mr. Attorney? Or you want to continue to call a roll on item F and go back to E? What is your preference?
To complete this and then go back.
Fantastic. Madam Clerk, continue with the roll call on item F.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Mia Jones?
Aye.
Vice, Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
Vice Mia Miller?
Aye.
On the item E, there was, Madison has a question on, and it reads, "Consideration of authorizing the issuance of bonds of the City of Danville, Virginia, an ordinance authorizing the issue of the bonds of the City of Danville, Virginia in the maximum aggregate principal amount of $16 million to finance the acquisition, construction, and equipment of various capital projects." Madison, what's your question?
If he can come up for a minute. Thank you. So when we buy these bonds, I know we have to get them in by the 30th to be able to use the money in the next year. If we're not, are we, it says 6 million of it we use for?
So this ordinance just opens the door to the possibility of issuing bonds. And the term, the length of time you have to do it is this fiscal year and next. So every time council authorizes the issuance of bonds, we have that capacity to use this year. And whatever we don't use this year can be carried over to the next year, but only for the two fiscal years.
Okay, so what do we use last year? Do we got any left over?
Yes, we definitely had some left over. That's how we're able, for instance, the electric projects are about $12 million. We're only, 10 million is the yearly limit. So we're using 2 million from last year in addition to 10 million, or whatever was left from last year and plus this year to make up to that 12 million.
Okay, but this, now this will stretch us out to 25 million now?
This is the, we always, council always authorizes the maximum amounts so that we do have the flexibility to take unused capacity into the next year. The actual issuance for this year, I believe, with governmental projects and utility projects is about 14, 14 and a half million or near 15 million, which would be the additional debt that we will issue to those projects.
Okay, so when we doing these, when they're doing these bonds and we're doing, I understand Public Works and the Electric Department are usually separated, but they're together? Or we do, do we do bonds for Public Works? And I know the electricity has their own.
There's two sections of the city charter that addresses bonds issued for utility projects and bonds issued for governmental projects. But when it comes to actually issuing the bonds, it can all be combined. So we just do one large issuance for all needs.
Okay, so if we take part of that and put it in the utilities company, and the utility is part of it, I mean, I know that they punch in 15 million to the general fund, plus or minus a little bit. Why would we fund, why would we fund that on the other side?
So utility debt service is completely funded by utilities.
Right.
The utility funds have to budget those debt payments, and it's not intermixed at all. The debt service for utility bonds comes out of the utility operations.
Thank you. Communication, city manager?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to point out that there was an article in the Chatham Star Tribune, perhaps in other newspapers as well, that highlighted a firefighter that we have, Hillary Alderson, who helped spearhead getting some masks for pets, some oxygen masks for pets. It's something that, you know, we found that really helps if there is a fire and there are pets in the house, that giving the pets oxygen really is a lifesaver for them. And I just want to recognize her for her effort in getting that grant funding from, I believe it was called Project Breathe. And so I just wanted to recognize one of our employees for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Deputy City Manager. Thank you, sir. City Attorney?
Yes, I'd be remiss if I did not wish my wife a happy anniversary, 31 years as of tomorrow.
Outstanding. Congratulations. What's your wife's name?
Jacey.
Congratulations. City Clerk?
No, thanks, sir.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Vogler?
I get to bat leadoff tonight. I want to first give a shout out to, we had school board member Terrell Payne here tonight, and I want to thank him for something, and I'm going to explain here in just a second. But I got a phone call Sunday night from someone who was letting me know about a family who had just moved to the area. Without getting into all the specifics, they were trying to figure out how to get their child signed up for school. They had just moved here and had a thing. I called Terrell, and within 24 hours, they had everything straight. Everyone was happy, and it was resolved. And so I think it's a good example of the teamwork, you know? We talk about council and school board, and we're going to be working together on things. And I called him, and without hesitation, he was on it and got it done. And so I want to thank him for that. And again, you know, school year is underway, and the teachers are in there working hard, and the students are working hard. I know some of them are already doing the SOL kind of, the tests they do early in the year to kind of gauge where everyone is. And so I just want to wish all the students and staff and teachers a great school year. But again, Terrell, thank you for what you did in that situation and what you continue to do with the school board. Lastly, I just want to say today is August 16th, which is, today is actually the 45th anniversary of the passing of Elvis Presley. And Elvis had a motto that I think is appropriate for the city council. And it was, actually, I have it on my necklace, a TCB with a lightning bolt, and it stands for Taking Care of Business. And so when I think about the progress of Danville over the last few years, I can say without a doubt that this city council has been taking care of business. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Whittle?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Buckner?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to all the teachers who had us at the schools last week. It was very nice to welcome all the students back. It's so exciting to see them come back, and they're just so on fire for education and wanting to learn. It's a very, very, very fun time for us. You know, I second that to National Night Out, man. We always have a great time with that as well, which is coming up soon, I understand. So thank you to all you guys for hanging out when we were at the schools. It was a really good time. So thank you so much, Mayor.
Thank you.
Reverend Campbell?
Yes.
I'm thankful to Tommy Bennett, NAACP, for showing recognition to Uncle Joe, and we value you in our community and family, man. Yes, picking back and off my friend here, Buckner, this is, hopefully, will be a very successful year. And we're looking forward to seeing our schools get better, move up to ladder, to up our grade where we are within the state. And it's going to take a village of all of us being concerned and playing the role of each one reaching one. And I think that we can do it. And picking back and off of Barry, we see that we have another person who lost their life today, and we are concerned, and we do not have to have a city of violence. I think this is the seventh homicide this year, and we want to keep, we don't want to go up further than that.
No.
We cannot, we cannot, we cannot. We have a good chief, Chief Booth. We have a good city, all-American city, and we can do better. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Hood?
Oh, yes, I'd just like to acknowledge Mr. Vincent Brown for this weekend at Bible Way. He spearheaded his SPM LLC Employment Skill Development Program at Bible Way. And the overwhelming diversity in the audience spoke volumes to the contractors that we have here in the city. Everybody from white, black, to the Hispanic community was also out, involved in this. And I want to say happy anniversary to Mr. Whitfield and Mrs. Whitfield, and special thanks for always seeing Uncle Gus, who I call like a second father to me at Trinity Baptist Church.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayo?
Thank you. Like Councilman Campbell said, you know, I see it, we see it, we hear it, and it's here. And we're going to continue to call it out, citizens. We got to call it out. We got to call it like it is, and we have to make a stand to stop it. It's not going to stop until we do. So I'm soliciting all our citizens, please, ma'am, please, sir, if you love your community, protect it, protect it. Let's call these individuals who want to come make trouble. A lot of shout-outs, Mayor. We done back to school, and I'm trying to keep up with the mayor, and he gets up at 4 o'clock in the morning, but I can't do that. But councilmen all over the place welcoming students back. We just greeting them, and it's just a fun time was out there, just doing it all the way through. And so students, you're doing well. And I tell you, it was just phenomenal to be at George Washington High School. And the process was so smooth going through there with the ministerial alliance and so many others who took place. And I saw a lot of men on the front, on the forefront, really taking a stand to welcoming our students back. Caesar's groundbreaking. Wow. What can I say? It's here, everybody. And I think we were all looking forward to it, and I still want my shovel. Sherman tried to get one, and I tried to get one. We're not good at it. But it was a phenomenal sight to see the groundbreaking taking place for Caesar's and how we are looking forward to as the time goes and it's coming up. Councilman Hood and I had a chance to go out to truth and worship, and I got a chance to be the mayor for a day, for a little bit, in their ribbon cutting. They had a phenomenal time with Pastor Towns doing their ribbon cutting and fellowshipping and opening their doors up to their brand-new church. So Councilman Hood, I'll definitely give you kudos on that right there because we definitely had a good time. Uncle Gus, Tommy, your group, it was good seeing you all, and shouting out to my wife over there also. But they told me I'd be quiet, but I'm not going to be quiet on that. That's my wife over there, you all. But Uncle Gus and his wife, it is a pleasure to see you all in the midst, still loving each other. 75 years is a long time, I tell you. But I want to know how you continue to eat what you eat and not gain any weight. And you ask Councilman, you ask Mayor, can you come to the house? But I like to come too. Can I come?
You got to get up at 4 o'clock in the morning, but, Ma'am, Sir, Ma'am.
Okay, well, we'll do that then, just for a meal. But it's so good to see each and every one of you all. And I want to also let everyone know about our Van Street Baptist Church, which is my church, is having a Community Health Awareness Day, promoting the community cancer awareness. That's going to take place Saturday, September 10th, at 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Camp Grove Recreation Center on Bradley Road. They're going to be doing health providers, pre-screening, health vendors, music, entertainment, exercise training, free food, and our Southern Bale Food Truck is cancer, is screening for cancer. We know what cancer does. We know what impact it has had on everyone. But cancer has no gender or age. It's always proactive. So please, ma'am, please, sir, mark your calendars and come out. Our church was fortunate to get a grant for it, and it was something that they really taken off with, and they want to promote that real well. Also, I had an opportunity to go out and meet one of our heroes of our city, a man who really means a lot to me, helped me become that basketball player I was trying to become, but George Tick Price, who had his book signing. Got a chance to meet Tick, talk with Tick, and I'm really looking forward to reading his book. But he's been in the college ranks for over 40 years, coaching and winning, putting young men in the pros as well as getting a round solid education. So hats off to Tick. He was in town, and so glad to see him and look forward to even talking to him as months goes. Last but not least, DCC will be spearheading and hosting the Job and Resource Fair. It's in the makings, and it's going to happen in November. And so we're trying, because COVID has done so much out here and has transitioned a lot of our lives, we're trying to bring some sense of normalcy by inviting employers as well as resources out to get the information as well as employment. A lot of employers are seeking people to work, and we want to know and let our citizens know that we are really about you. And so this is going to take place November 1st, and we're looking forward to having it, and you will hear more about it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Well, as Councilman Buckner said, one of the most exciting days of the year is opening schools. And we had, on Friday, there was an open house for the schools, and then Monday was the opening day. And, you know, I know our schools have been disparaged and said, you know, they're not doing great. But if you had been there, all the way, I went to a preschool at Grove Park. I went to elementary schools, and then I went to the high school at Galileo. The excitement was just amazing. The teachers, the students, they were glad to be back to school. They were ready to learn. It's just, I just didn't realize how good a group of students and teachers that we have. So I think, see only good things for Danville schools in the future. And also, Councilman Buckner and I attended the tourism meeting recently. Lisa Merriweather is our new director of the Division of Tourism for our city. And we had our consultant here, and Councilman Buckner and I had about a two- to three-hour meeting with them, along with Roy Ford, the town of Chatham's manager, Richard Cook, and several other people, and just getting input on what we need to do to improve the image of Danville and Pennsylvania County. And they'll be coming to the public as well, because I think this is an area that's been underserved by advertisement for what's here. We just don't get our word out very well. And so I think that's all going to change. Tommy Bennett here with the NAACP, and I'm just glad you could hear Tommy comes to council almost as much as a councilman may do. But we welcome him every time. And then yet, in the paper, there was an article on Reverend Keen and the Minister Alliance, and they were putting the spotlight on Almegra, which I've tried to do in the past myself, just a community that sort of got forgotten. And it's amazing that they had their own police force, they had a baseball park, they had a hospital, all these things nobody knows about. And I think it's the time we shed this, put the spotlight on that community and also help them, you know, I think they sort of got forgotten with annexation. Some of the things that were promised to communities, they got bypassed, as well as there were some other communities in town as well. So I appreciate and I applaud them for putting the spotlight on Almegra. And then the Caesar's grand opening was wonderful. We're, I can't tell you how many people have come to me in the last few days and just can't wait, and they're, when is it going to open? We're ready to play. So I think we're going to do good. And, you know, the Bristol Casino in the first week brought in $37 million. They paid out 33, and they still made a $4 million profit in one week. And that was only with a partially open casino. We have a much bigger drawing area than Bristol, Virginia. So I want to see good things for our community and for our tax rolls. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Saunders?
Oh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to say to Mr. Payne, I did visit three of your schools last week with the GW, Bonner, and Woodbury, and the students are ready to learn. They are really fired up and ready to learn, and I was very, very pleased to see that. The vice mayor talked a little bit about Almegra. I think we all, Almegra, we all know that Reverend Bridgeforth's been talking about it for years. So, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask you if our manager could see what we can do with regards to the community coming back. They had an event a couple of months ago, and the vice mayor was cutting ribbon out there, and I went to that. So Almegra, there's a lot of history there, a lot of history there. And the people really want to, you know, they want to get back involved again. It reminds me of Woodrow Wilson School, you know, that was one of the best-performing schools in Danville at one time. And that was because the entire community surrounded that school, the students, the teachers, the principal. And it was, that school was doing so well. Some of you may remember, the city council had a meeting at that school, okay? Took all of our equipment and everything. So whatever we can do to help our students, to help Almegra, and also to our Tombstone students, thank you for coming as well. Glad you're here, and I have a lot of friends who still work there, and some have worked there. Your guidance counselor was a friend of mine for quite some time. So we're glad you're here, and if you want to switch over to Danville and join the Danville Public Schools, I'm sure we'd be happy to accept you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor Jones?
To those of you who visited with us tonight, we just want to say thank you so much. I was hoping that I could get you all out of here earlier since Uncle Gus and I were here. But Councilman Mayo had a list of things that he wanted to share over there. That's what happens when he's the mayor for a day on Saturday. And I'm guessing, Councilman Hood, you were the vice mayor? Dr. Miller, we're going to have a talk with you when this is all over. But to Uncle Gus and Apple Harris, thank you all so much for being here tonight. The NAACP, thank you all so much for working with Tommy. Keisha and Terrell, stand up again. Keisha Avery, our school board, you heard a lot about Terrell. They really do care about our schools. They really do. I hung out with them at Bonner, and as all of the council members stated, we had a great time over at Bonner and Westwood early that morning. Thank you all so much for what you're doing. As you heard, it's excitement is in the air, and it's because of the great work that you all are doing. Thank you all so much. Let's get on my hand, please. Young people here from Tombstone, we're going to be getting off the air in just a second here. We're going to come out and sign your paperwork. But to those of you who are viewing, City Manager, I want to thank you so much for your report every week. Every Friday, the city manager sends out a report from all the department heads of all of what's going on with the department heads. I want to say to our Social Services Department, like we say to all of our employees, Councilman Saunders, your prayer tonight spoke in regards about our young people. It talked about love. Thank you so much. If you ever read the report that we get from our city manager, one of the most discouraging parts of it for me is the social services report. Mr. Moody and his team do an amazing job, and I say this to all of council members because you see it. But if our citizens could see what our young people are going through in that social services report. Your prayer, sir, was very much needed since school has started. Councilman Campbell, thank you for praying for our school system a couple of weeks ago. Prayer is going to get us there, and we got to continue. Our young people are facing some challenges, tremendous challenges. And we talk about the village, our teachers, it's going to take everybody. It's going to really take everyone. So what I heard tonight as I closed is a love story. I've never been in council and heard a love story. I heard the love story of the wonderful couple back there married for 75 years. Then I heard Clark, the love story of Clark and his wonderful wife about to celebrate their anniversary. And lastly, Councilman Mayo got so jealous, I heard him talk about his lovely wife, my lovely wife. So it's, council's been phenomenal tonight with a beautiful love story, you know? And then we are adjourned.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So I can go home tonight? My wife and I just celebrated 50 years of marriage.
Wow. And the love story, hold on, hold on, hold on. And the love story continues. Dr. Miller, did I, you want to add something to the love story?
Marriage June 10th.
Put your mask down so we can hear you.
50 years of marriage, June 10th. I'm ahead of you.
Madison, Madison, anything, man, you want to add?
Hey, y'all better get that in quick.
We are adjourned. Thank you, sir.